This conference will now be recorded.
Everybody rise, we'll have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day, thank you for the great town that we live in, help us to try to improve it and help us to think through all these different issues that we have. Continue to love us and keep us, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, with the name of God, in the midst of this.
You're letting it get higher, right?
Good deal. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Senator.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Minutes approval for February 2nd, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of February 2nd, 2023.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no, motion carries. Okay, discussion items, we actually discussed this back in February, continued discussion on establishing.
You want to try, yeah.
New zoning district, light industrial. So, Sprenger, turn it over to you.
Okay, we have been discussing this, and this was actually discussed several years ago. The proposal at that time was to hopefully rezone Sandy Lane, do all of you have these maps? Thank you, Alan, put some of this out. The pass request was to rezone Sandy Lane to light industrial, and then just have industrial uses there. At the last meeting, if you remember, our Chair of the Business Committee, Mr. Tom Banish came in, and he said he would volunteer to go and look at, find out all the businesses on Sandy Lane. And we wanted to make sure that these businesses were in the permitted uses that were allowed on Sandy Lane, and we're doing that now, we're in that process. It was also discussed that maybe we should look at Azalea while we're looking at Sandy Lane. So, if you'll look at your maps, this first map says Sandy Lane, that yellow line. You'll see the side that's in the county is actually zone light industrial. So, it would not really affect, rezoning our side would not affect Ori County at all. And there is a buffer, which we discussed before, right behind their zoning to the residential. So, they do have like a berm there, or natural tree line. The next page, Ori County portions of Azalea Drive. Those are highway commercials only. And some of those are GC, which is general residential. And the next page, you'll see Glen Bay Road. The black sections here are what's in the town limits, this is on general residential, and then this is the highway commercial. And Mr. Santos actually sent us the North Myrtle Beach LI, which is the purple, the next map, shows purple, that's the zoning map for North Myrtle Beach. The city of Georgetown, there's up there industrial. And the next page, you'll see the County Surfside Beach zoning map. This one has the red hash blocks on the Sandy Lane as well as Azalea Lane. Those are the only vacant lots that are on both Sandy Lane and Azalea. Most of, the majority of Azalea is not in the town limits at all, only one side. And you'll see on the zoning map, it's one side, and then you'll see that one little right after their Fifth Avenue North, there's a little niche there, that's two condos. I don't know how they got in, but they're connected to two more. There's two, the two on the front are in the town, the two after's not. I'm trying to hold this. Yeah, right here.
I was saying, these two right here, you talking about the two furthest to the right?
You see Fifth Avenue?
Yeah.
Extension?
Yeah.
Yeah, that little jet up right there, that's two condos.
Okay, just to the, just to the north.
Right, exactly. And then this is the storage buildings here, the parking lots in the town, the storage units are not. This is where the SMT generator plant is now. This is a portion of plantation resort, of course, this is vacant. But this is the remainder of Azalea Drive, so this is the only parcels that are vacant. Those also back up to the general residential, not the highway commercial. So, I don't know if we want to rezone Azalea in that section industrial, where it backs directly up to residential in here. There's no buffer.
So, there's 10 vacant on Frontage, 7 vacant off of Azalea.
Yes, that's correct.
I should know this, the Azalea part?
Uh huh.
What is surround, we know what businesses are surrounding, you know?
The.
Are those, what I'm getting at is, do those residents behind already have some industrial on there?
They do not, yes. The ones there is doctor's offices and real estate.
Okay, so it would be a new deal for them?
Yes. So, we bring all of this to, to, first of all, to give you options, but, but to also say, we talk, we discuss certain uses that are allowed and permitted by the state of South Carolina. We can't necessarily say we don't want them in the town limits. We can regulate where they're located. And we talked last time about tobacco and vape shops, and maybe CBD stores. We can regulate those, even if you do not rezone Sandy Lane to LI, we can still limit those to Sandy Lane. We can.
If we, if we did rezone it light industrial, would the vape shops and all that be a permitted use in that district?
That would be up to Planning Commission to make recommendations to council, that's what staff would recommend.
So, that's, yeah, I mean, it would.
We'd have to.
We're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot if we want to put them there, but yet we rezone it, where it can't go.
Right, exactly.
Well, and I think what we're looking at here, and we've talked about this a lot, I mean, we're, we're following our conference plan. You know, these recommendations were made 10 years ago, so I like the fact that we're kind of sticking to the plan and not getting off of it here, so. My, my biggest question is, is, is the light industrial going to be a huge impact or a, something that's going to raise a lot of eyebrows and say, oh, that stuff's good, I'd like to go to Surfside Beach because they've got light industrial now? You know, that might be a question, we just have to wait and see, but does it make that, does it make it more attractive?
Well, I can tell you, with the limited number of lots that we have, and I can, left on Sandy Lane, we're in discussions right now with the five lots. Someone's looking at both, all five of those lots with, I mean, they have an option to purchase, according to them, I have not talked to the owner. And I know there's another, the actual, the Business Committee has found a business in Conway that's interested in another lot on Sandy Lane. So, I mean, we're down from nine, and then we're going, we might be down to three lots.
So, those interests aren't light industrial existing?
They are light industrial, yes, they, in nature, yes. So, it wouldn't hurt us, but I don't know how it would be so attractive, because we'd be, we'd almost be.
So, the 41 parcels that are there include the vacant lots?
Yes, yes, in fact, this, like I said, this, this map here with the red hashtag, the red hashtags are the vacant lots that's left there.
I think it would be good for the town to prevent any more of the types of businesses we don't want on 17, force them over there. You know, yes, you can have your vape shop, but you're going to have to put it over there.
Well, at least we will have an option.
Yes.
Yeah, you can come to town, we've got a perfect place for you.
Yep.
And we do want, I mean, we do have them coming into the office regularly asking if they are allowed uses and where they could, right now, we're telling them it's not allowed because it's not a listed permitted use. We did tell them, we are looking at where we can place those, because we have to place them somewhere.
Do we, do we have a, a list or a guideline as far as what would be a permitted use in light industrial?
In your books, you have the, the list of permitted uses now, and they actually, we limit several things to Sandy Lane right now that are basically industrial uses. And then anything that, any additional uses that you'd want to do, we could certainly do that as well.
We just have to readjust that charge.
That's exactly right. Because we're going to have to adjust in any way to add some of these businesses that are now requesting to come in.
You know, I'd like to get this zoning done if we're going to do it before we have five more vape shops on 17.
Well, we won't allow them now at all, because they're not allowed. And we, in fact, I got an email here from somebody that says, we real, I want to know why they're not allowed. And I told them, they're not listed as a permitted use, but the Town Planning Commission is reviewing the ordinance to see where they can be placed in the future. So, they know we're working on it, so.
Yeah, I guess I lost the thread, because we've got one.
Oh, we do, and those that are there were either there before this change, or they were, I think we discussed this last time, the latest one was listed as a grocery store.
So, we have to allow them, but is there, I mean, is there a number that we have to allow?
I don't know if we can. I mean, I guess if we limit them to a certain areas.
That's what.
It depends on how many places are vacant there. We definitely limited them if we put it on Sandy Lane, because there's not much left.
Can I get that in rapid one for a second? You'll start?
Please, please do.
When they first came, and I'm just curious how those applications started coming through your desk, because the CBD stores are no one's radar until they're on everyone's radar. Future businesses, businesses I'm not thinking about, right? So, whatever the next CBD craises, how can we forward regulate that to this area?
Yep, well, we get a lot of very strange and very unique requests for uses. And when we do, we write it down so we can bring it to you as a whole, but, I mean, we can't predict what someone's going. But even if someone came in and it's not listed in the ordinance, they can't do it until we bring it to Planning Commission, you tell us where to put it, and then we carry it to council and get it approved or denied. But we do have a list that people have asked for that's pretty unique in nature.
Do you even like the grocery store, the lot? Is somebody enforcing that, inspecting that?
It's not, I don't, honestly, it was, they, it was approved before I got back.
Yeah.
And there's no definition for grocery store, we talked about that, I think, in February too, where if somebody comes in now and says, this is going to be a CBD shop, but we're going to sell some groceries, we're going to, and we just got to know a town attorney, thank God. We have drafted up some, we're, a language that's, that defines a grocery store now. And you have to have a cer, you can only have a certain percentage of CBD or tobacco products. But we have to, I'd like the town attorney to review that before we bring it forward. But that's, I think that's the only way we could permit them again.
Can we, can we use like a definition, and this is what internally from the bank, when I'm trying to fix my follow-up port codes and stuff like that, I use the NICS code, that North American.
Yes.
Or whatever it's called, anyway, can, and it's, I go by, if I have a blended business, whatever the, the lion's share of revenue is coming from. So, as soon as you hit 50 or 51%, or wherever the majority of your income is from, or the largest chunk, can we define it that way?
I think the business license uses that, that, so.
And I think that's what we base it, I thought that's what we based it off, although why we did it that way.
It would be easy to enforce that way, because if we went out and liked the one we have now that we really can't regulate, if there, if it's a certain percentage of non-grocery and it's CBD, then we could certainly take action.
Especially with stuff like that, I mean, it highly incentivizes cash transactions. Cash transactions are getting your tax returns, and your tax returns is what's reported in your NICS code. That solves that very, very quickly.
Yeah. Because we're using it now, I'm sure we can use it, but I'll.
Or if not, I'd like to know why.
Yeah.
Probably don't, outside of this.
It would certainly be easier to enforce that way, and through our department anymore.
So, if light industrial was never on the table, for whatever reason, and we were having a meeting around limiting CBD or other establishments, we could still accomplish that, right? So, the two are not tied together as we must do light industrial to limit CBDs.
No.
We can write the code to say, CBD stores must be 5,500 feet from the doing one. And that'll push everybody up there without light industrial, right? So, they're just, they're two separate issues.
Right, and we're going to have to, if, if, if the Planning Commission decides, yes, I want to establish a, and again, that was 10 years ago, I want to establish a industrial zone, the intent of that zone is going to have to also include uses other than industrial, because CBD's not industrial.
But then, I don't think a comprehensive plan, unless I'm mistaken, is establish industrial zone.
It does, I've got it right here.
Establish industrial zone.
The future land use.
Isn't it has something to do with attracting business? It's not so much you got restricted, it's about attracting.
Exactly, that's right, you're exactly right.
I think the other problem too is that if we do it without naming the industrial zone, then we have to name this specific business type. There's no catch-all business.
Well, we have to do that anyway. You have to list a specific use in the, in the type of zoning we have.
But we can't use that as a catch-all?
You can't say like retail.
If it, well, I mean, if it's a permitted use by state, but it's not in our ordinance, this is where it goes, a code decided else.
Oh, I don't know, we could, I mean, I could ask the attorney that, if it's not listed, could it go there? Is that what you're asking?
Very similar to our sexually oriented business, is that, we don't allow it in town. It's allowed in the state.
It's allowed in town.
But what, you know.
But it's so restrictive, you cannot, that's exactly right, yes. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, because it says, if the commission wants to consider a recommendation for a light industrial.
Yeah, and on the future land use map, it says, the second area for transitional consideration is along Sandy Lane. Existing and anticipated uses along the street, different type and the intensity from comparable zoning lots having funds on 17. Town council should consider the creation of a commercial light industrial zoning district for areas illustrated on the land use map. This should be coupled with the refining of how we commercial districts permissive uses to exclude warehousing and other industrial types, just put them over there. So, it is, but the, like I said, the conference plan is 10 years old, and we're looking at it now. So, I mean, that, it'll be up to this committee to say, yes, we still want it, or no, we don't.
Can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the potential business that's looking at those five spots, is that one business that would combine one of those five lots?
Yes.
So, if I take our 17 open lots, and if light, assuming light industrial is the only thing that would ever go in there, like, nobody would ever do any type of commercial business there, 17 or nothing, and some of them will combine, let's call it, that's 10 new businesses. The benefits of the town with its business license, which is 100 bucks plus .001. If they do a million dollars, this small business, thousand bucks or so, maybe 2,000, it's prospering. 2,000, it's $20,000 a year incremental revenue. Jobs really don't do anything for us from revenue standpoint, and I'm assuming the. Build a house here, a couple of vacant lots. It's a $20,000 decision from town. Where I still am stuck is all of these other maps, like, if you just Google Earth and do like, where's their use? They all look really bad, light industrial. I'm not saying Sandy Lane looks like.
That's Sandy Lane and 17.
Well, I'm just saying, it don't even allow it at all, but the CBD thing on 17, we could fix that without light industrial. I just.
Right, and I have to say, we could still, I mean, again, it's up to the, of the commission to make recommendations, but you can just say, we don't want industrial at all in the town. Because you can see on other, all the other zoning maps, the industrial zones are pushed to the very far end, they don't want them in town, they don't want them near the center of town. But we're unique, we only have two square miles. So, if you either say, we don't want industrial, we've considered this, we don't think it's good for the town, you can still say, but we want this list of uses to go on Sandy Lane, or Azalea Drive, those two, and then Glen Bay Road, and that's how, I mean, that's permissible.
I'm 100% for that, I just, I question the light industrial, because there is no precedent of a small town having a nice light industrial area and benefiting the town as a whole, in my mind. So, if you look at other towns and see what it looks like, and it's just like. That's, that's for, that's for 20 grand, I mean, it was brought up in another meeting, you know, you know, the incremental revenue that's around here, 20 grand, 20 grand, but it's also town prosperous and tourism, anything that might dial that back a little bit. Like, if it starts to look a little crappy, it bleeds on this side a little bit, then does that hurt? The town's tourist base?
I'd actually still.
They may not, but there's like a creeping effect, like, if you go by Georgetown, if you go by the, the North Myrtle Beach, Grand Strand Airport, like, it goes airport to industrial businesses, and then like, the next block over is kind of not industrial, but it's just kind of junky, like, it just has this knock-on effect, it's not like a barricade, but, I don't.
Well, we're landlocked, behind it.
But I'm, that's, that's what I'm saying, creeping, this way. Landscaping, our beds, we were talking about, these are our project. We asked for quite a lot of concessions for landscaping and that. They agreed to do it. I can probably.
Well, I think if you, if you decide we want to do light industrial, then it's, it's up to us to police those properties and police that, whatever we do with light industrial, and make sure that it doesn't, I mean, there's, there's places on 17 right now that don't look most beautiful places in the world, that I'm, I'm not even going to get there, that's for all the other discussion. But I, I think if the light industrial is an attraction to light industrial businesses. I think Sandy Lane, if there's 41, there's 41 parcels, and there, what'd you say, 17 of the lots?
Well, that's, again, that's including Azalea. And do you want to consider Azalea knowing it backs up to a residential, I mean, directly residential? On the Sandy Lane side, everything on that opposite side of the road is industrial in the county.
So, we're just basically matching one side of the street?
If, if.
I mean, the west, the west side is industrial, across the street, the east side would be industrial.
Right, you're correct.
Light industrial.
You know what types of businesses there is, just out of curiosity?
There's mechanic shops, and there is air conditioner.
Granits.
Like granite store.
The ones that want to move in there now.
Oh, no, I'm not sure who, yeah, I know.
All right, where do we go from here? I mean, what do you, what do you need from us, or don't need from us?
Well, if you, first of all, we need to know, is the Planning Commission leaning towards rezoning the, I mean, Sandy Lane, Glen Bay Road, and Azalea Lane, Azalea Drive, limited industrial? Are they interested in just Sandy Lane and Glen Bay Road? We need some direction, or are you not interested in rezoning it at all, but looking at the uses to place in that area? That's basically what we need to know, so we can bring it back next time with more, more information, especially now that we have a attorney for this guy.
Would your recommendation be to do all of it or none of it?
I really would not recommend Azalea Drive because of that, there is not a huge buffer there.
You think from a legal standpoint, that could be a problem with residential?
Right, because you're encroaching, you're, you've got an industrial zone, which is even more, um, I mean, that's a huge, I mean, huge liability when you're right back up to a, you're talking about zoning encroachment, that's definitely not.
Does the, the current buildings that are in the county on the west side, are they required to have some kind of fencing and the buffer?
On Sandy Lane?
Yeah.
Yes, and we would do the same thing.
So, that could be done on Azalea, six-foot fence?
Sure, if they, you know?
So, there, okay.
Yes, that's true. And the Glen Bay Road, that section that we are, we have in the town, which is small, the last parcel is a, is a stormwater pond, so that can't be built on. The other is where that industrial park is, they got.
That's exactly what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly right.
So, it runs all the way up to basically the condos?
Right, the condos are not in the town, but that, that pond that's just before it.
Whole parcel east of Azalea is in there.
And then that industrial zone, whether it's on highway commercial or not, that is industrial. And then that medical park, there's a real estate, right side of the medical park, real estate office, but then behind the real estate office is that landscaping, which is not in the town. So, are you, are we talking about Sandy Lane and Glen Bay Road, or Sandy Lane, Azalea, and Glen Bay Road? Or not?
Well, that was kind of, that was kind of my point. Do one, two, three, or done, or a combination as far as enforcement? Well, I mean, what would be the perfect rule for you as far as a light industrial district?
Well, I, I agree with Alex, we, we certainly need to police that area. In fact, we just got, thank God, we got a new coenforcement officer, and he's actually working on Sandy Lane. Because if you went down there now, it almost looks like. There's things there that should be repaired and replaced, that would, that area would be pretty easy to enforce. We already enforced Glen Bay Road because of the uses there, we consider it industrial anyway. So, we're already enforcing it on that, that lane, so. And Azalea, again, you only have a few, few properties left, that would not be an enforcement nightmare. Especially if we write it toward, to say, you have to have the fence, you have to have certain landscaping. Be very specific on what they have to have, and then all we need to do is make sure they maintain it.
Yeah, I mean, and that's exactly what I was thinking, we can, we can actually bring some of these properties to up to standard, give them, what, six months?
Right, exactly.
To bring, here's, here's our new, you know, kind of like our commercial overlay, you got to bring it up to standard, then we would have, you would have some teeth to work with.
Yeah, exactly, and then it would not look like.
Almost.
But I agree with you, whenever you say industrial, well, that's the worst area in, in the town, in any town. That's why, that's why it's zoned, industrial.
If they're with me, I know I'm not, not that I should, is Surfside Jenny's property in this?
Yes.
It is, but it does not have to be.
What I'm thinking is, I, you know, it always kind of looks like it's on its last leg. If somebody were to buy that, tear it down, what could they build there, what couldn't they build there? And do we want it, because it's right next to the walk of the Surfside Beach line? Do we want that to be?
Yeah, I would not recommend that be limited, I mean, industrial. I, I think it should stay highway commercial, because then that, the permitted uses, we'd rather have a restaurant than a metal building that's.
I don't think the first building, like, you know, I complain all the time about the back of the Picklewood Street Mall, it's so awful.
Yes, it is. It is.
But we don't need the same awful on Sirside Jenny's property, that should change.
I agree, absolutely agree.
Yeah, that's what they wanted to buy that one time.
Yeah, that's what he did.
And they were like, really?
Sirside, you created people out of this.
So Sirside Jenny's, the laundromat, and then of course the bank, those three, I would certainly recommend leaving as highway commercial. I'm sure right past the entrance of Sirside Beach.
Yeah. It's bad enough now, it's going to allow it to get worse.
I agree.
I didn't solve much of your question.
All right, well.
Sabrina answers if he has problems with, with Azalea, I'm, I'm in favor of leaving it out.
I was going to say, I don't know what we gain by.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I just was riding one day and just saw several open parcels on Azalea. So that's why I brought Azalea up, potentially.
And there aren't a lot of open lots, but they're in the county. We, I drove down Azalea as well, and, and you can see from Glens Bay Road, uh, behind the Pickle Wiggly, all the way down to where the new generator plant is, all of that's in the county. And there's a lot of open space there.
Yeah.
But it's, it's in the county, and actually it's zoned residential. Some of it's zoned residential, some of it's somehow a commercial. So the only, only small part we have are the part where there's already a retail, I mean, a real estate, nice office there. There's a dentist or doctor's office there. So these are really, they're established businesses that may not want industrial beside them.
Why?
Because it look about, I mean, they had, these are big and.
So you're, what I'm hearing is those types of businesses interfere with professional services businesses?
Yes.
That's why I'm, I don't, why do we want that then, anyway? Like if we're saying, and we don't want it next to a doctor's office, because doctor's office may not look kindly on it. And the next professional service of building that may go in there, may not go in there because it's a factory. Then, but why would we want that anywhere? Or, so we just chopped down like twenty thousand dollar estimate, taking Azalea out, like we're down to twelve.
It seems like Azalea is inviting two problems. I rate residents being home and.
Right.
And the businesses that are already there may not be happy either. That seem like a forfeit.
Because that is actually the, the four that's there. That lot is, those four lots have been, several people have come to our office. They want it to put junk, wrecked cars on those, that four lots, and we've denied it. If it was limited, I mean, if it was light industrial, hopefully would have been away. Right beside the doctor's office and the retail.
Retail.
So that's, that's why I did not, and again, the residents.
And I agree on, you know, there you've got two churches. I mean, you've got some, I agree, there are professional services down there, but as we thought back over Sandy Lane, I don't think we have those kind of.
No, no, absolutely not.
So, well, it's up to us to make a recommendation, so I will open it up to the commission or a motion or no motion, or.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Before I make it?
Sure.
If there was a recommendation and a successful vote for continuing to think about light industrial, but task the town to write an ordinance on some of the businesses that we want to stop on seventeen? That could proceed imminently.
Absolutely, yes.
Regardless of any light industrious. So if we don't vote on light industrial, we're not delaying stopping the next CBD store from opening up.
No, you're not. And we, we don't really need a motion tonight, I just need a staff needs direction as to what area you're looking at. And then if that, if we're looking at that because the how limited, I mean, the light industrial, excuse me. It's on the opposite side already in the county, and you're looking at Sandy Lane. Then we'll go back and we'll adjust, we have a draft ordinance already. So we revise the draft to include the areas that you're talking about. And then when we meet with the attorney, because we did write at the last meeting, we wrote several, um. You know, you can have a CBD store if you meet this, this, and this criteria. We wanted it reviewed by the attorney before we brought it front of you, we want to make sure it's legal. Tonight, we just need to know what areas you're looking at for limited industrial. And then maybe what uses you might want to put in that area. If we know tobacco, we know CBD.
So CBD tobacco, that's already a motion?
Yes, that is.
Okay.
That's right. Yeah, whether you rezoned or not, we're going to bring it in front of you to ask that that go, that be allowed only on family.
Mr. Chairman, may I say a couple of things? One, I apologize for my lateness. I was a little confused. Usually we're on Tuesdays, we're now on Thursday. Usually it's six o'clock, for some reason today it's five thirty. I've been in and out of town, it's good to be back. Dealing with a lot right now. But, you know, thought a lot about this, I've been asking people in the area, you know, what their thoughts are. And it doesn't seem like people have an opinion one way or another. However, if we were to expand our, you know, or add designation, light industrial, and had more of these type of things, would we have to change the branding of Sirside Family Beach to Sirside Family Beach and Light Industrial? So, you know, two square miles. It's valuable property. This, you know, we're right here at the beach, you know, we're looking to the future, what's going to happen? You know, I'm a business person, I want to keep my businesses going. I want to expand them. The only thing that stops me is sometimes local laws and things to that. So, you know, if we are a family beach, and we're, we only have this proximity of, you know. In my opinion, I think it's counter, counterintuitive to our mission, which is to have a wonderful, clean, beautiful family beach. And so limiting to light industrial or less, in my personal opinion, is how I would like to proceed. That, thank you for having me back. Good to see all your smiling faces.
Welcome back, Scott.
Thank you.
And Alex, if I, if, talking about the permitted uses and can we just do that, and just not zone that and then direct certain uses to that area? We already do that, page fourteen and then page sixteen of the permitted uses here. I mean, right now, everything that's listed here is allowed, but only on Sandy Lane. So it's like screen printing, science lab, research facilities, mini storage units, metal shops, that type of thing, manufacturing. All of that's allowed only on Sandy Lane right now.
You're just adding CBD.
Right. And, and some of the other lists that we.
What else will be on that list?
I can't remember what, what, I mean, they, they would not want, if you want them on seventeen.
We had a choice, we wouldn't want them at all.
My concern is that this is reactionary. And we're not. Well, zoning it as light industrial, I think would allow us to have a bucket that we could tweak future looking, instead of constantly having to throw in some language to curtail this, the new unsavory business, you know? Because I don't know what that's going to be in ten years, but I know it's going to be something. You know, I mean, that's just how humans operate. And if the highest and best use from a capitalistic standpoint, the best return is by dropping that back there, then that's where I see the benefit of the light industrialism, is because that gives me the net to, to cast and get those businesses before I know about them. I can forward move and say, okay, now this is where you guys need to, need to be. And then after that, you know, it's, there's only forty-one lots, so you go buy someone else who has a pre-established business, if you want to be back there. I, I think that's the benefit, as I see it, is that gives the town the tools it needs to maintain its image, instead of having mixed signals along the seventeen corridor. And then just saying, okay, you're fine, you're not fine, you're fine, you're not fine, you're fine, you're not fine. Is, here's a solid ordinance that we could repair as the.
Consistency?
Yeah, I think this gives us more consistency than what we have now.
Would we, I think I heard Sabrina say that she had a draft ordinance already prepared?
Yes, I think.
Would, would her bringing that back to us, letting us see what it really says and what, what we're getting into? Would that be something, and like I say, we can vote it down at that time, but at least we'll be able to have seen it in writing and update the permitted uses charts and maybe revisit this next month.
I don't know if you want to run through the lawyer, right?
Right, exactly.
And we're not in a rush.
And I think we're just, she's just looking for a consensus from us.
That's exactly right.
Where to go, and I'm just kind of throwing that out there. Like I say, it's not binding, but we know what we're dealing with. Whatever you guys, I'm just throwing it out there. But is, is everybody?
So she's not, Sabrina's not, sorry. Sabrina's not presenting anything to do with light industrial. Your, what's with the attorney is permitted uses on Sandy.
I have, I actually have two, two things that's ready for the attorney. One is the permitted uses that need to go on Sandy, that we're looking at, that may be going on Sandy Lane on. Restricting it there with conditions. That has nothing to do with the LA. And then the, I have the, a draft of the limited industrial.
You were right. Wow.
I keep saying limited, light industrial, I don't know why I keep saying it.
You've got that in your head.
I do. Light industrial, I have that ordinance draft ready. Just, and, and I'd love if maybe next month, you can look at both individually and then together, and then you could give me direction as to where you'd like to go.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
We're good going that way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Doesn't it also sound like we're pretty much leaning towards Sandy Lane only? Is that where we are?
I think we're leaning towards Sandy Lane and possibly Glens Bay, but definitely not Azalea.
Yeah.
But um, Azalea, because of the residential heartburn we might have in the future.
When we talk about Glens Bay and the entrance to the town, it'd be ugly.
Yeah, we don't want to be a bad neighbor, you know?
We don't want to be at our entrance here.
Yeah, I like to see, I, yeah, bring back, bring back both of them, and then we'll maybe hash it out next month, but.
And not the three lots near the corner on the side of the town.
I can take out Jenny's and Laundromat.
Jenny's, Laundromat. All right. Good deal. Um, public comments? Seeing the commission comment. I appreciate everybody coming, I appreciate everybody adjusting their schedule with Sabrina and myself and everything. And next month, we'll get back on our regular schedule, six o'clock Tuesday meeting.
Sorry.
So any other?
Any other comments?
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion on second?
Second.
Second. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
You oppose, no?
No.
Motion carries.
Thanks. Such a short meeting. An hour late.
Well, I'm really short for you. I was very short. And I should, and I, and you can crawl back on to.